All right, call the order. It's nine o'clock. If you will, stand with me and let's begin with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we come unto you today thanking you for this day. I pray you be with us, Lord, as we make decisions for this county that be in the best interest of everyone here, Lord. I have special prayer for Dana Applewhite today, and you'll heal his body, Lord, his ribs, and help him recover from his fall, and thank you for him, Lord. I pray that you be with us, the first responders in our county, be with our nation and our country, Lord, as we fight this pandemic, and I pray that, thank you for this rain, and that we'll be able to deal with it, what comes with it, Lord. And we thank you again, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our May 24th Commissioners' Court meeting, just after 9:00 a.m. And we don't have an abundance of items on the agenda, but we have some very important items, and we've got some folks that would like to speak during public comment time. So I will begin with that. Item number one is our time for public comment and/or requests for information on non-agenda items, in keeping with our Open Meetings Act. And if there's another agenda item that you would like to speak on, you can speak on that as we get to it. But for starters, we've got some folks here to talk about the Sugar Hill Fire Department, which is not on the agenda, and so we welcome them. And whoever would like to begin, if you'll join us there at the podium, so that we can get it recorded for those that are going to watch at home. And if you'll just introduce yourself, tell us your interest in this, and whatever you'd like to say.
My name is Ronald Collins. I'm president of the Community Center at Sugar Hill, and my interest is in the Sugar Hill Fire Department. We've been getting all kinds of rumors. We don't know what's going on. We found out that all the trucks come back to the Community Center last week, or week before last, whenever it was. And we found out that, heard through this and rumors, we heard Jerry Clark lawyered up, got a lawyer, and turned everything over to you and your lawyer. And we're wondering what's going on. So we're wondering if you could give us some kind of answers, what kind of date we got, and we gonna be able to get another fire department up. We got everything. We're trying to work on everything on our end, but we're wondering what's going on on y'all's end, too.
I've had one conversation with Chief Clark since the last meeting. As far as a lawyer on behalf of the county, we have a county attorney, but we have not engaged any other attorney specifically for this matter. In fact, I don't know that there's any need for the county to have such. We're advised by John Mark Coburn, our county attorney, if we feel like there's a need. And he has been integrally involved in conversations regarding this particular subject. Now, if Chief Clark has got an attorney, and I believe he has spoken with one, he mentioned that to me, he didn't give me any reason as to why he had. Here's what I gleaned from the conversation. He felt like he should, and I don't even know who his attorney is. Nobody has contacted me as far as an attorney. I think he simply contacted someone, whoever that is, to be sure that what he was doing as far as the steps that he had already taken, and he might take in the future, were appropriate. The second part of that conversation was to assure me that nothing had been done that was not reversible. So his original intentions, he put the brakes on them, so that this new group would have every opportunity to make a go of this without having to restart from scratch, which would have been, you know, a pain and a time, you know, a time-requiring task. That three-minute conversation is about all that I got out of that, and I wished him well on his three-week vacation. So, again, to my knowledge, there's no legal subject here, as you might imply when somebody, quote, "goes and hires an attorney," and there's been no communication with me by any attorney. My guess is, that's gonna be a conversation between that attorney and Chief Clark, and I don't anticipate it's going beyond that.
About all vehicles that's back, when are we gonna be able to get a department going back going?
From what I remember Chief Clark telling us is that there is still some equipment that's, I guess, locked up, and he's asked, hey, let me get back from my vacation before we just go in there and ransack the place. But his intention was, and he specifically made calls to everyone, that he had either given equipment to, or indicated that he was going to, and said, here's the new landscape here. We don't need to be claiming equipment that would otherwise rob the new group of making a go at this fire department. So I don't personally know what all the equipment and vehicles are that go with this department. I don't know where they physically are. All I know is what Jerry Clark told me, and that was, I'm trying to get all this stuff back where it will be available to the new group.
I know the truck, one grush truck, and the engine, the engine never left, and the grush truck would say, come back in on the Thursday. And Jerry Clark and his wife, Michelle, had a truck and a trailer with boxes on it. They took over the fire station and unloaded it.
Okay.
I seen this with my own eyes, so I didn't know what was going on. And people have been asking me what's going on, how long were we out at the fire department in Sugar Hill? Because there was an accident out there, it was Saturday night, I think. And, you know, we had a fire department sitting right there within 150 yards of it, and everybody had to come from different directions to get to it. Man got airlifted out because of the accident. It probably wouldn't have been airlifted out anyhow, but I don't know how long it was before anybody could come from Argo or Talco to him, if it could have saved, done any different than what we could have mighty could have done if we'd have had a fire department going.
Right.
That's what our concern is. We'd like to get it back up and running. We've got qualified people to do it. They've got the training. One of the boys is going to training this morning, and he's state certified. The other one's got all of his qualifications. He's gonna try to get everything together. He said he's got everything he needs to run the department. And we've got people standing in lines, trying to make sure we can, we need to know what we got to do to be ready to go step in when they do. That's what questions are in Sugar Hill. And, you know, people are getting disturbed because we don't have one.
Right.
And we're trying, I'm trying, the other man we're here is trying to keep everything calmed down, but it's gonna eventually get ugly if we can't do something.
Here's what I would suggest, I would suggest, and, you know, Colton House was here at the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
And that's the only person that I personally know, and I just met him on that day. I think the first thing that would be good would be for whoever is the leadership team to make contact with a centralized person. It's probably not me or the Commissioner. I would say, I would recommend Chief McCray, just to say, hey, here's who we are, here's the training we have, we want to get plugged in as quick as possible, and we want to be functional as quickly as possible. Beyond that, I think everybody sitting up here right now is supportive of that effort. The only thing I think that we're dealing with right now is Chief Clark's return, where there can be access to every piece of equipment that might otherwise be available to this department. But let's get these guys plugged in as fast as we can, get them involved in the chief meetings, and go forward. But I fully support you guys, but I don't know how to go out there and coordinate this effort, and probably Chief McCray would be the most helpful person. And if there's any friction there, we need to get past that friction somehow, some way.
You don't have go, though, when you stand there and still, and nobody's doing, seem like nobody's doing nothing about it.
Well, I don't think anybody stole anything. I think that-
I wouldn't say they stole anything, the standing still.
Still, still, okay, still.
Yeah, not stolen.
Still, okay.
And, you know, it's standing still, and we don't have a fire department, and people are, you know, people are wondering, and wondering why, and how dumb, and why, for...
Well, I think they could probably immediately be a contribution at any fire. And so I would say, the first thing I would do, if I was a member of that leadership team, would be to contact Chief McCray and say, this is who we are, here's our credentials, here's our phone numbers, we want to get plugged in as soon as we possibly can.
And I will get a hold of the chief and Colton. John Grubbs is gonna be the chief. Colton's gonna be-
He's not going to be?
He is gonna be.
He is going to be, okay.
Colton will be the second-in-command, and his wife, Crystal Grubbs, who was the EMT-
Yeah, she was here.
-was the third. And then we got a president, we've got everything, we've got two boards, we've got everything in line. And we, another thing, I'm wondering if we could go ahead and have benefits, start raising money, but we don't know how much money we've got, or if we got any, except what this court will hand us when we open up, if it would be legal for us to go ahead and have some kind of fundraiser to get started with.
I don't think you need any of our permission in order to do that. Here's another thing I would remind you, to remind these guys. We have a recently completed volunteer fire department, I call it agreement, with the county. It's a document that I have received some signed copies, but not all of them, from the chiefs of these departments. It's important that the chief and his assistant are familiar with that document, they can read over it and see what the expectations are, because a significant part of their future success is going to be the relationship with the county as it's documented in that agreement. And that includes the money that we send to them on a monthly basis, the run money that they get, and then it spells out what the expectations are of them. And that is, you know, filling out their run sheets, filling out their training sheets, and getting them to back to the auditor's office on a timely basis. And so they may not have even seen that document yet. I don't know.
Where do we get this document?
I'll be glad to give them a paper copy. I'll be glad to email it to them, any way that they need to. But again, I hope that there is the ability by these new leadership fellows and ladies to communicate with Chief Clark and say, whatever friction we've had in the past, we want to put it aside and move forward.
Well, I'm hoping that's what's working, but you never know.
Well, as of the other day, Friday, or Thursday, Chief McCray had not heard from anybody in that department. They may not feel that they need to do that, but I just think it's a good way to communicate and express to him their desire to be part of this volunteer fire department team. Not that he's their boss, but let's face it, we do need somebody to help coordinate efforts like this. And we've got a unique situation here, and we want it to move forward with as little, you know, with as little problem as possible.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming. Ms. Thompson?
Judge Lee, Commissioners, I just came today. My name's Janie Thompson. I've lived in Sugar Hill for probably 30 years, originated out of Harris, Texas. But just wanted to give the support, and ask for your support for our volunteer fire department. It's an excellent one. And in the past, just personal experience on how it feels to have one, I've probably in 30 years, I'm a registered nurse, also worked for the state, so I'm familiar with government rules, policies, politics, all that kind of stuff. So I was department director for the Department of Health and Human Services in our main office, I was Tyler. So, but anyway, the time I've been here, I've had to call, you know, 911 four times. One time for my brother-in-law, who I started CPR on, and then the local fire department came and took over. And then one time for myself, someone called, and then two times for my husband, that's late in October. So it's just a good feeling to have a fire department like we have sitting there. They can't train to support us, but they can come provide support and assistance. And that means a lot to people when you're out in the country like that. So I appreciate what I heard you say today. It sounds like you're in support of us maintaining our fire department, and we don't want to lose it. So I'm representing a lot of the community. Of course, I haven't talked to everybody, but most everyone there wants to keep our fire department, to do whatever we need to do to keep it. And we just appreciate your direction on what we need to do, because we're kind of in limbo, and that's not a good feeling. So, appreciate it.
Well, again, I've said this at the last meeting, and I'll say it again, and I speak for myself, I think it's how these guys feel. We want a Sugar Hill volunteer fire department. There will be nothing good that comes from the loss of that department. We don't have other departments that are really ready, willing, and able to take over that geographic area. And if we don't have that, either bad things are going to happen, or, and/or, we're going to be more heavily reliant on the city of Mount Pleasant to reach an area that, let's face it, it takes a while to get out there. And then it's gonna cost us more money when it comes time to negotiate a contract for services provided by the city. And it only makes sense that the less we're able to do as volunteer fire departments, and the more reliant we are on Chief McCray and his professional firefighters, somebody's gotta pay for that extra manpower, that extra gas, wear and tear, and on and on and on. We don't want to do that, because that means tax increase and additional large items in our budget. I want this department to succeed. And if there's anything that I can do to help in that process, you all know how to reach me. But again, I rely on Chief McCray as my eyes and ears in those departments. And I know they have regular chief meetings, so the quicker we can pass that baton and get these guys part of the mix, the better.
I agree with that. So he's not really in charge of the volunteer fire department, so is there a particular person that is?
He is not in charge of the fire department, but he serves kind of as the coordinator, because as has been established before, and has been for several years, when the city department is on the scene at an incident, they are recognized as the one who is in charge. Now, that's with the exception of Talco. And so, again, you know, when that event is going on, whoever is there from the city of Mount Pleasant is the one that's running the show there. Now, Chief McCray doesn't tell them how to, you know, do their books, or how to spend their money, or, but he does help to coordinate and keeps me informed of who is getting their training done, who is showing up to each event. He keeps track of all of that stuff. So he's more or less the centralized information gatherer, but he's not their boss. But having a good working relationship amongst all the departments and with him, to me, is extremely important.
I agree with that. Are you in the opinion that we can just take it over right now and start?
That we can just say that-
We could just start with our new board and new fire chief. Can we just go ahead and start that right now, or are we waiting on this part?
Well, again, again, there is a new, this all, these both kind of happened at the same time. We're trying to get this newly created agreement between the county and each volunteer fire department. So I would say that, yes, they can get going and get started immediately, but they need to be aware of what the expectations are in that document.
I listened to that on YouTube, and y'all were talking about the things that were on that agreement.
You know, quite honestly, there could be a group of guys anywhere in this county that says, we want to, we want to fight fires, and I think they could start work immediately. But again, where does that funding come from? How do they get the appropriate level of training? Because you, as a citizen out there, you want trained people on the scene. You don't want just a bunch of folks with good intentions showing up.
I agree with you. Well, I do think we have some people ready to go. So we'll continue to get funding from the county if we get it going?
Again, let's take a look at that document, be sure everybody understands the expectations are, because it's very clear in there what it takes to get that funding. But yeah, I want to be able to write checks to the Sugar Hill Fire Department.
You know, we did have a fire department even before Mr. Clark. I know there was a couple other, even the candidates, a couple other people that was started even before Mr. Clark came. So we've had a good fire department all along.
And any of your, any of your leadership that wants to call me, tell them to call me, and I'll probably tell them the same thing I've just told you. But whatever I can do to be the cheerleader, I'll do it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this subject while we're at it? Oh, I thought he was gonna speak. Okay, we'll move on then. Any other comments, non-agenda items?
Debbie, would you like to come and speak to us?
Yes.
Come on up here.
Come on up.
My other suggestion is the disaster, I mean, the storm from February.
Yes, ma'am.
There's disaster relief, and I have called around, I've talked to you, Judge Lee, and also called Cole Hefner's office in Austin to find out what we needed to do to get Titus County on the list. And according to county code 418, you're supposed to, Judge Lee, you fill out a form, and they present it to the Commissioners' Court, who they vote on it, and submit it to FEMA. My understanding, because everybody I've talked to, nobody can tell me the threshold of what you qualify for. And you gave me Alexander's name, Mr. Alexander, with FEMA.
With FEMA.
And I talked to him, but he's, again, doesn't know the threshold. That's not his area. He did send me a form, which I think I forwarded to you, showing in order to qualify. There's different levels, and as business, I wanted to qualify for a loan to do the repairs. And anyway, you can't apply unless our county's on the list. And to my understanding, if you submit, you know, you submit it to FEMA, it's up to them to determine it, notch off as far as the amount of damage. And I know there's different levels, different areas for the county, you know, for county damage, and there's ones for, you know, personal damage and for businesses. But FEMA's the one that determines that. You go through them. And I'm just requesting that maybe y'all feel like discussing it, fill out the necessary form, vote on it, and submit it, and let them go from there and determine it.
Well, as we discussed before, and I'm not an expert on this, but I rely on the experts, but Mr. Alexander, whose name I gave you, several months ago, I guess back in early March, if not late February, shortly after the storm, we, along with probably most every other county in the state of Texas, did submit a request. We did have Commissioners' Court approval, not that there was any doubt. We were of the mind that, of course, we want support from the federal and/or state government if we can get it. And we submitted our request straight to the governor, which is the direction we were told to go through, and that they would in turn try to get us as one of the approved counties for FEMA support. We were not approved, we, Titus County was not approved, because apparently, this is my interpretation, there was not enough damage in Titus County to warrant us being on that list. Now, if you have talked to somebody at Cole Hefner's office or anywhere else that says there's some other path that I can go down, I will do it.
Well, under county code 418, there's a different path. Y'all still, I guess, the forms you send, but you don't send it to the governor. You send it to some disaster, there's a special place to send it to. I don't know if that's through the governor, but it does the list, the governor.
Can you tell me who's giving you that information?
Representative Cole, Secretary of, whatever her name was, Barbara, she, I talked to her, and then she called me back and gave me the information.
Okay.
She said she would check into it and find out.
Is this for state relief or federal FEMA funds?
Yes.
Yes, which?
Yes.
Is this for state assistance or federal assistance through FEMA?
My understanding, federal.
Okay.
Did you tell homeowner or business, or was it both?
Well, it was for both, is what my understanding, for both. And also, I know the county, because I'm at the edge, over there, right by Kent County, our businesses, and that is under Wood County. Our register will print out and receive every time the power goes on and off. On that Monday, we would go out and check every day. So on Monday, there were 53 slips that had printed out from power surges. And while we were there, it would be on for about 10 minutes, off for two or three. And that's what caused the damage, on and off, because it was shutting things off. And my register ran out of paper. I mean, I've still kept all the receipts showing, so I know it was off for more than 53 pounds because it ran out of paper. And also, seven hours of that, it was off straight. So I know it was from the power surges, from the electrical did more damage to my electrical and the well and all. So I know that's from where caused the damage. And I realize, most of the county wasn't under Wood County, but I know a lot of the people in that area had damage from the electrical issues.
Have they gotten any FEMA assistance through Wood County?
No, it's Woody Electric.
Woody County, yeah.
It's Tyneside County.
We had some major trouble out there. I got, now I understand what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, so.
So where was Barbara at? What office was she in? Do you know?
Cole Hefner's in Austin.
In Austin, okay.
Yes, in Austin.
And you and I both talked to Mr. Alexander. I gave you his name, and he is the gentleman over our area with FEMA. I've talked to him at least three times, I think, in the most recent conversation I had after I spoke with you. We have a legitimate situation here. Mr. Alexander, is there anything that Titus County can do that we haven't already done to be able to help in a situation like this? He told me, no. Now, I don't know why he would say no, if there was a possibility. Oh, well, Brian, you didn't ask it in the right way. I said, is there any way that we can get FEMA assistance for homeowners for businesses? He said, it was tried, we just weren't approved.
Okay, when I talked to him, he told me that was not his area, and he had no idea of the threshold, because you said we didn't meet the threshold. He said that wasn't his area. He had no idea what the threshold had to be. He just was covering the, you know, process.
That's right. But he does know that we didn't, we weren't a qualified county.
He said he had no idea what was turned in, because I asked him.
And I believe him on that, but that's not-
Because that's not his department. And I understand, FEMA is a large area. He was handling the small business. He sent me this two-page form that listed all the counties in the area that had, you know, qualified, or actually post-state, but, you know, I looked at the ones. And as long as we're not on that list, he can't do anything. So that's, if we were on the list, he'd be glad to help me. But he said, you know, that he doesn't determine us getting on the list, is what he told me. Now-
Nor does the Commissioners' Court.
All I know is y'all need to, if y'all submit the form, that'll be out of y'all's hands, someone else can determine that. And that's all I'm asking. I realize, y'all, you know, it's not your decision. I realize that. But I just would like for y'all to submit the form to them and let them determine it or not.
Okay. Once again, I believe that determination has already been made. We will talk to Barbara and find out if there's something she knows that we don't know that we can do.
Okay, yeah, she's just-
I'll say another thing. We get tons of emails every day over every subject, and that storm was a major subject on our blogs with Austin and other Commissioners in other 254 counties that we blog with and email and text back and forth all the time. And we learn how we do different procedures and what's available and all this. And we, we just didn't hear anything like this, or hadn't been discussed. They may be talking that 418 form is what we did vote on and send in. So, you know, we will do everything we can, yeah.
I would check into it. I appreciate it, and see what we can do, again, if y'all just-
And that threshold, nobody knows what it is. I've asked everybody.
I mean, I've made several calls, and no one knows, and so-
We've been through the FEMA process before, back when we had heavy rains. What year was that? 14, 15?
15, 16, yeah.
We went through the same process. The state of Texas did have enough overall claims to where we were approved for FEMA assistance. So Titus County, along with however many other counties that had damage, we did meet that threshold, and we were allowed to get some FEMA funds, which helped us- that threshold, and we were allowed to get some FEMA funds, which helped us with some road money to get our roads repaired. But either way, again, I'm not an expert. We'll call Barbara, and I will let you know what I find.
I appreciate that, that's all I'm asking.
Hopefully, we'll discover something we don't know about, but I'm not there.
I'm just asking that y'all check into it and see, you know, and if you can't fill out a form, fill it out, let them, you know, let it be out of your hands, and let them determine.
We will do that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Debbie, tell me your last name, so that...
Chaney.
Chaney.
C-H-A-N-E-Y. Thank you.
And your business is...
Port Shana Vico, they're on 21.
The former Snappy Pappies.
Yes.
There we go. All right.
And, yeah, because we sell minnows, I have to have a will, and the power surges is what caused the damage to it. And of course, line insurance, I tried to file, and they said, no, because of the storm, they won't pay. So, you know, but...
I'm sorry.
Wasn't made sense.
Thank you for coming.
Besides, you know, of course, you have food logs and all that, we can cover, but I would like to see if I can get some assistance for the bill.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item number two. We'll consider and possibly approve our minutes from May 10th, our last regular meeting.
Like motion to approve?
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve the minutes of May 10.
Second.
Second Commissioner, Parchman, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A report from Commissioners regarding roadwork status, and I don't know that we made it crystal clear, but our Commissioner Dana Applewhite is out today. Apparently, he fell off a ladder yesterday and broke a couple of ribs, so he's miserable today and is not here. I did, he did respond to my text message, so at least he is, he is functioning this morning, but we hope to get him back quickly. So, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Parker. Give us an update on roadwork status.
We've been doing some, or quite a bit of patching, and I've installed a couple of culverts, and mostly just trying to, trying to get, get the road, take care of the roads till, till we can get in and start doing some more work. We've got, got quite a bit we've gotta do, but, but it's kinda hard to do anything when there's water standing everywhere, so we've just been trying to maintain what we can.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fitch?
We've been dealing with the rain and the trees, fallen several trees down, and a lot of repairs, several washed-out places in the roads that caved in. It was immediate attention, and patching, so we've got some material coming in this morning, and we headed out with what we had, and we'll have some new stuff. We're gonna be patching this week, pretty hefty, getting things going.
Thank you. Commissioner Parchman?
Fixing soft spots, patching potholes, keeping the culvert cleaned up for the water to flow, cleaning up trees due to the storm.
All right, thank you very much. Item number four, we have with us folks from Prefort Complex Designs, Glenn Calvert, Wade Clark. They have brought to the Commissioners, hot off the press as of 10:30 last night, the most recent sealed bid specifications and contract documents regarding the Justice Center remediation, I'll call it repairs and enhancements, is what I will call it. If you will recall, just kinda reviewing, a few meetings ago, we approved using Prefort Complex Designs, which includes these gentlemen that are employed there, to provide work for the county, which basically was to help us determine what exactly was needed at the Justice Center in the way of repairs to damage caused by the broken pipes in the ceiling, and then beyond that, what improvements to that building we should make since we have no one in the building. In other words, there are certain things that are real difficult to do while you've got a full staff of people over there. And some of those things were replacing ceiling tiles, adding additional insulation into the roof, into the walls, possibly adding additional duct work and additional heating and air conditioning tonnage, replacing exterior doors, the list goes on. But the Court decided this would be a good opportunity to not only get us back to where we were the day before the flood, but to also do some improvements to that building that will extend the life of that building, create a more comfortable work environment, and enable us to save some money on utilities. So, that's why I call it repairs, that being to the leak that was caused by the broken pipes, and enhancements to the building. And that is what they've done. They helped us describe exactly what the scope of the work was, step by step, what rooms needed, what work done. They have come up with a 40-page document here that not only describes the work that needs to be done, but then there are lots of additional pages in here that enable a competent contractor to bid on a project where they understand exactly what the expectations are, so that if we give this out to 10 contractors to bid on, they're all starting at a level playing field. And there are also documents in here that ask about the qualifications of each of those contractors that we hope will bid on this. It asks for them to be bonded, it asks prior work history, whether or not they've ever walked off of a job, or didn't complete a job, or had legal action brought against them. So, there's a lot of additional pages here beyond just describing the work to be done, and where we needed to replace sheet rock, and where we needed to replace insulation. And so, I met with Glenn Calvert and Wade Clark last week, along with Commissioner Parchman, to go over the preliminary copy of this. We did, in that meeting, make a few changes with Glenn's suggestion, and I think those have been worked into this document, and perhaps this is the final document, perhaps there's something else that we want to consider before we sign off on this and decide this is the document that we want to put out to the general public to solicit bids. So, Glenn or Wade, who would like to speak toward this document and kinda walk us through what's in here? I realize that not everybody has a copy of this 40-page document. I will email that to anybody that wants it. I know Steve Ayan's gonna want a copy of that.
So, I'm Glenn Calvert, Prefort Complex Designs, and I think Judge Lee had a good synopsis on what the project includes. This is, as you know, a public project, so it does have to be supported by a payment performance bond. We do ask for qualifications. One of the things that public works issues are caused by, a lot of times, is the lowest bid, and what we wanted to do was to provide alternate and additional selection criteria other than just the lowest bid, because quite honestly, the lowest bid, sometimes they forgot something, you know, it just, it's, it opens you up to potential issues. So, one of the things that we did, and we had discussions about, okay, how long is this project going to take? We know that the people in that building want in it as soon as possible. So, instead of telling the contractor that, okay, we want this project finished in 120 days, or 150 days, whatever, we would have put into the bid documents, we are allowing them to tell us how fast they can finish the project. So, it gives the Commissioners the opportunity to select a contractor to complete this project based on price, based on completion time, based on qualifications, based on references, so that you can make the best selection for the overall, the project and of the county. As an example, you might have a project or a contractor that says, okay, we can finish this project for $200,000, and we can do it in 180 days. Whereas, you might have someone that says, okay, we're gonna do it for 275, and we can have it to you in 100 days. The question for the Court would be, okay, is it worth for us to get into that building that much quicker? So, it just gives you some alternate selection criteria whenever you get the proposals in. I would call them more of a proposal than a bid, because we're getting the entire package as far as their qualifications, their price, and their time of completion. As far as the scope of work, it does include everything from replacing exterior doors, insulating the building. That was, that was the first complaint that we got whenever we started looking at this. Judge Lee says that the people that, in the middle of summer, can never be cool, and there are a lot of people in that courtroom. So, it does include reusing and reworking through existing air conditioning units, in addition to adding another unit. It was undersized, plus you had no insulation. It does include replacing the floor, even in there later, there is no floor in there other than exposed concrete. Complete wall repainting, all of the walls, the bottom two feet are pulled off of the stud so that the walls can dry out. So, it's replacing that, repainting, new ceiling tile, new lighting package, because the lighting in that facility is all fluorescent, and the thought was go back with LEDs, it'll be more efficient, they'll burn cooler, it'll just overall be a better performing project. And with the exception of the outside skin, on the inside, it'll look like a new building. That's the goal.
Will you remind us again, because we're a public entity doing a project like this, we have some more requirements and some more expenses that we'll have to bear as a result of the fact that we are using public funds, as opposed to if I were doing this same project on my personal building over there, I could avoid doing some of those things. And you've kinda mentioned, you know, the performance bond, which may increase the bid of a contractor over somebody else that's not bonded. We have, we have to use an engineer and/or architect on a job like this, whereas I might say, oh, you know, I trust my good friend that's always done my work, who's not an engineer or an architect. What else might there be?
The payment and performance bond, that's a, that's a state mandated requirement. Anytime there's public funds at stake, this is to safeguard those public funds. The performance bond guarantees compliance with the construction project and completion of the project. The payment bond guarantees that all perfected pay plans will be paid, and all this there for is to protect the public funds. The, at the end of the day, the contractor has to go through an underwriting process based on qualification, based on finances, all those kinda things. And the cost of that payment performance bond, you know, for a legitimate, well-established contractor, may be 1% of the contract price. So, if you have a $100,000 project, that payment performance bond might cost $1,000 or $2,000. Obviously, the smaller the project, the bigger the percentage. The larger the project, the percentage starts coming down some. If it's a contractor with a questionable past, his bond premiums would be more expensive than a, than an established, successful contractor. And all this there for is to protect public money. The other, the other part of this in regard to, and we talked about this some the other day, in regard to inspections, it doesn't do a whole lot of good for the county to put money out and guarantee it's completed if it's not completed correctly. So, there needs to be a review process that validates the money that the county is going to be paying to these contractors, and whether that's an engineer, an architect, or someone from the city, or a Commissioner reviewing these, this work in place, and confirming that yes, it does comply with contract documents, here are the documents, there are the work, it's all done correctly. That's the other step that's put into place to safeguard the public money.
I think I would like to run through this list and see if there might be any comments or questions that you wanna talk about, or that anybody in the audience might have a question about, but this is, and also, you've broken this down into very small pieces as far as how the bids are going to be given. Rather than then just giving us a X hundred thousand dollar bid, you've asked for it to be broken down into very specific amounts, and tell us some of the rationale behind that.
Okay. The reason for that is to begin the process of a schedule of values. We have these bid documents that the general contractor is going to use, an AIA document that has, okay, a summary sheet, how much the project is worth, how much has been paid to date, how much they are looking for this pay period, how much remains to be paid, and then that particular summary is certified before you guys would execute payment. There's a backup form to that that rolls up to the summary sheet, it's called a schedule of values. And what that is, is on that bid form, is a schedule of values, so that every scope of work is listed, and there's a line item next to it as to what contractor valid values for that particular scope of work. So, we would, goes directly from this bid form to the schedule of values. And what that does, if there's just two or three particular items of work that are, that are worked, completed that particular month, say it's, say it's walls and ceilings and insulation, if that's what they've done, you've got a line item for walls, you've got a line item for ceilings, you've got a line item for insulation, you can see it's done, and you will just be allocating a percent complete to those particular line items.
Because they've got a price associated with each one of those. So, that overall $500,000, whatever, I'm just grabbing a figure, is broken down into 25 different components of $5,000 to $25,000 each.
Alternatively, if he's got $500,000, and he said, okay, I've got this done, I've got that done, I've got the floors done, whatever it is, that may only be $50,000 worth of work, but who are you to tell, you know, no, that's not $200,000 worth of work, that's $50,000? There's gonna be a complaint there or a disagreement. So, it gives the Court the opportunity to see what these values are going in, because those would be the same values that are on the schedule of values that roll up to the application for payment. It's just a lot easier for whoever's reviewing the work and certifying the application for payment to see, yes, that is done, that one item is worth this much money.
Okay. So, step one is gonna be making sure that they're bonded, insured, they have their safety equipment on site, mobilization and demobilization, bringing in the equipment to the site, having the manpower ready. Then we've got spray foam insulation, that's five inches of thickness in the roof, and three and a half inches of thickness inside of the stud walls. Exterior weep hole clearing, so we've got some drainage holes on the outside of that building, and this says, this item shall include all costs associated with clearing of those caulked weep holes at the building's south exterior wall, and that was keeping us from having the right drainage out of that, or am I misinterpreting that?
Ventilation, I'm sorry.
For ventilation, to get air in that wall, in that weep hole?
Well, the problem was, those weep holes are, are there...
They're holding water, yeah.
The wall will flow out of the wall and drain the wall, but...
Instead, it's coming inside.
Right now, it's going to the, it was going to the inside, I think that's the reason why they caulked the hole, but the problem is, there was a sprinkler head right outside the building, I think that's shooting water up into the hole into the building, so...
Okay. Gutter and downspout replacement, we've got some beat-up, missing, bent, leaking downspouts that may be contributing to, you know, degradation of the building. Exterior door replacement, we've got six steel exterior doors in addition to the glass doors in the front. We've got, we're installing two new hose bib locations on the outside of the building that aren't there, where we need to occasionally plug in a hose for cleaning air conditioning units, et cetera. Flooring replacement, here's where we've got some options. Are we gonna go back with the same kinda commercial carpet that was ruined in there, or are we gonna go back with ceramic tile or an alternative on that flooring? Drywall replacement, we've cut out two feet of the, of the walls where we had to remediate the mold or potential mold damage. Interior wall finish, we've gotta go back to texture and paint those walls. HVAC replacement, we've got three units that are in there right now, we need a fourth. We're gonna keep and utilize three of the existing air conditioning units. We're not gonna trash it all and start over, but then we will add to that along with the appropriate ducting. Cabinet construction and installation, we've got one of the offices there that doesn't have an adequate amount of built-in cabinetry that we're taking, that, that would be an example of an enhancement to the building, not a repair of something that was damaged. There's a... There's a little tiny bit of concrete work where we've got to repair and fill with concrete, some hollowed out area underneath the front porch there that's gotten washed out. We've got roof repair where we may have leaks on that roof, not a, not a roof replacement, but roof repair. Exterior wall finish, we've got to caulk and repaint the wood portions of the exterior wood siding. And then a ceiling install with two by two acoustic tile ceiling, because everything that's in there right now is kind of saggy because of the extreme humidity that we were dealing with at the time of that flood, plus it'll give it a nicer look. And then electrical, we've got to remove the existing lighting, replace with new lighting. Again, going back with LED lights as opposed to the existing fluorescent lights. So that's just a quick rundown, and then here's a bid schedule with 17 separate figures that are requested to enable us to quantify what is each one of these steps worth. So I know you guys haven't had a lot of time to absorb all of this. If you want additional time, fine. So I think at this point, we've got several options. We can say, you know what, I want to study this more and see if there's any work in here that I don't think is necessary and scratch it off. If there's anything there that I don't see and I want to add it on. If you want to look through all of the, the non collusion affidavit, the bid bond, the actual contract itself, the definitions that go along with all of these general conditions. And that, you know, at least three quarters of this has nothing to do with the specifics involved in fixing that building. Supplemental general conditions, performance bond, and payment bond to make sure the subs are paid. And then lastly, there's a county commissioner's certificate of approval, the last document that will be signed off probably by myself saying the work is done, all payments have been made. What this does not include, and we have engaged Prefort Complex Designs to produce this document for us, it does not include Glenn or Wade or anybody else at Prefort overseeing this job. So once you make a selection, one of the questions we need to decide either now or soon is who is going to watch over the general contractor to be sure that each step is done the way that we want it done? Are we going to pay for someone else for that service? Are we going to take it on ourselves? Now, we can utilize Glenn and Wade to do something like that. We can hire a, an uninterested general contractor or whatever else that you want to do. But I want that clear, that we are not getting that service as part of the work that has been hired thus far. So any general comments or discussion by any commissioners, we can begin with that, and then we'll try to formulate that into any action items today.
I think Glenn and Wade are real confident on the condition of this building. We've been over it several times, and they've been here since the damage occurred, day one. I'd like to have them be the ones that oversee our contracting on this job. They're real knowledgeable in what we need. I know we all look at every little detail ourselves, but we need somebody that's expert on it, so they, I would recommend that. I think it's time to go forward with this contract, to get these documents released so people can start bidding and getting their act together to get this work done on the building.
You know, and on that subject about who's going to oversee this, I think, was it in our meeting or did we have a subsequent conversation? I was asking you, you know, what kind of work would be involved of an expert that would serve as our eyes and ears on this project? And we were thinking that, you know, maybe every couple of weeks, there would be a meeting of, let's say that it's you, or whoever would meet with the contractor, walk through the work that's been done during that two weeks. So there might be, and you, I think, said about a half of a day, so maybe four hours every couple of weeks for the duration of that project to provide those services. Now, this isn't a 50-foot skyscraper, it's a relatively simple job, you know, in terms of comparison to other projects. But again, I don't have the expertise to do it. Maybe someone on this commissioner's court does. I personally agree with Commissioner Fitch that I'd like somebody that's familiar with this job to, you know, keep an eye on the general contractor, and hopefully, hopefully we get a general contractor that, you know, doesn't need much oversight and supervision, but we don't know that. So thank you for your comments. Commissioner Parchman, Commissioner Parker, anybody want to talk about these subjects?
I think we should go with Glenn on it as well, overseeing it.
Are you comfortable with this document and ready to put it out for public consideration?
I think so.
Okay.
I'm the same way.
Anything to add to that? Thank you very much for the work that's been done. Wade, thank you for coming up with this document to make sure that the county is doing things right. Again, there are cheaper ways to get this work done, but I don't want to be the one who's having to answer for why this project turned out so bad and wasn't done properly because we want to, we want to improve this building, we want to stretch another 30 years out of that building, and I think we can do it with what we're proposing here.
Yeah, our hope is spend a little money upfront, we'll save you money in things like attorneys and down the road. One thing that we did not include with this is because we didn't know how this would go forward. If we do manage or oversee this project on behalf of the county, we'll have discussions with the city as to what type of inspections they're going to require. John A. from East of New City, building this last week, couldn't talk to him, but I'll catch him this week. And if we are going to have biweekly meetings, I will go ahead and put that in this document here so that it's not a surprise to the contractor. We want them to know as much going into this as possible.
Barbara, in light of the fact that we've already approved this work at a price not to exceed $50,000, which is our bid threshold, and we don't know where that's going to come in yet, you know, Glenn may be prepared to submit an invoice to us. If we were to engage them to do additional work for us, what will that mean as far as any additional bid requirements? Or would this fall under professional services that would not require a low bid?
Well, certainly it doesn't under professional services, meaning the fact that he's an engineer, certified engineer. So I don't think that we could have to move forward with that. My understanding is that Tyler's County has for some time, he usually has work with the city, is local and has the appropriate certifications. So I don't think, I think we can move on.
Okay.
Judge Lee, I do have one question, though, and it may be something you need to, Mr. Carter, is the building that we're going to get back, is that going to be broken down at a level so that we can submit that to TAC, so that we can easily identify the repairs due to the weather versus the improvements?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm glad you brought that up. As Judge Lee said, there's 17 items on there. And the items that I'm familiar with, and this is something I probably want to look at just to be sure, that are flood related are going to be some miscellaneous plumbing, we've got some pipes to repair. The repair of the wall from floor to ceiling, that whole wall item is a repair issue. And then all of the floor, and then there's probably some ancillary stuff, cleanup and stuff like that. I don't know if you guys have already turned in a bill for that.
Some, some, some ceiling, and then that gutter from the ice, tore that gutter off on that backside.
Well, and here's where I'm hoping that we're going to get some detailed information from our insurance adjuster saying, this is what I find, this is what I think the appropriate dollar amount to cover that is.
Do you have a statement or adjustment from your insurance company?
Don't have it yet. Still don't have it.
So even, in my opinion, even a partial amount of respray in the wall, because, you know, all of that insulation has been pulled out of the wall, all of that stuff is gone. So probably, and I'm glad this is helpful, you know, right now we've got spray foam insulation covering wall from wall and roof, so that we can clearly show the insurance company what that's going to cost. I'll break that into wall and roof, that's two separate items. So all the insulation that goes into the wall, we'll say, okay, this is related to the, to the water damage.
And I don't know if he's expecting us to do the work of, that he should be doing. I think one of the main holdups is, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is he's waiting on a bill from the remediation company that I think may also include their cost to get the building back the way it was in addition to the tear out, removal, and drying out process. And he may be waiting on their breakout before he gives us a final analysis of what they're going to pay us. So again, we continue to wait on that. Any update on that? No? Okay. And so maybe they'll present to us, you know, a breakdown of what they're going to give us, and then we can look at that and challenge it or be satisfied with it, whatever the case may be. But no, we don't have that yet. It has taken a long time. I'm puzzled by the process also. It shouldn't be that difficult to assess and put a price on that repair.
So just so I'm clear, you have not got any sort of adjuster's statement that allocate, that shows work that's damaged?
No, we've got, in fact, we're, here we're going to approve a preliminary partial payment of $40,000 to interstate restoration for remediation work done at the Justice Center. We've received just as of Thursday or Friday, a $40,000 check, but it's like, I don't have the final number, I'm just going to go ahead and give you $40,000 because I know that that's going to be maybe half of what the restoration company is going to charge us. But as far as him giving us a detailed breakdown, which you would expect in a job like this, here's what we're going to pay you for getting your building back the way that it was. We still don't have that yet. Okay, well, here's a suggested action item, is that we approve this sealed bid specification and contract document that's been prepared by Prefort Complex Designs. Then I would probably have a second action item to authorize hiring of same company, Prefort Complex Designs, to serve as our oversight for the duration of the project to ensure appropriate completion.
Okay, let's make a motion that we accept these documents, these contract documents and specs, and use these from Prefort's.
To go out for bid.
Yeah, forbidding, go out for bids.
That's part one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this sealed bid specification pending a couple of minor changes that will reflect the fact that there is going to be oversight watching over the contractor.
And some slight adjustment to the schedule of values based on the things we've talked about today.
All right. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, you want to go ahead and approve utilizing Prefort Complex Designs for oversight?
Make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch. Second by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion on that matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Glenn, I think we've done all we can do today. I will try this week to get an update from our insurance company as to when and will we expect a figure to reimburse the county.
Appreciate y'all.
One other thing, just so you know, kind of a schedule here, as soon as we get these documents updated, whatever you get from your insurance company, we'll review these, preview that before we publish these. But we have a date for the receipt of these proposals back on June the 18th, and we've got the project open for contractor review right now in this bid document, June 7th. So those are going to be two of the steps that we take in the process. So hopefully, first of July, we have, as soon as we get the proposal, we might even want to call another meeting that, you know, lays everything out and gives everyone a chance to review all of this stuff. We can all do that together.
Is that timeframe adequate? Because, you know, realistically, we won't get anything out into the hands of the public until probably this weekend, and we've got a Memorial Day, Monday, the 31st. That would give them 18 days beyond that if we had something out on the internet and/or in the paper by this weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
That's reasonable? Okay. All right, outstanding. Thanks again.
Thank you.
We appreciate the help here.
Thank you, Glenn.
Item number six, no, item number five, I'm sorry. Consider and possibly approve a partial payment of $40,000 to interstate restoration for remediation work done to the Justice Center. And again, have we gotten a, we haven't gotten a final bill even from them, have they, have we? From Interstate? We don't have a final Interstate bill either.
I have not, um, I think I'm mistaken, everybody's wondering, we've been discussing or I send the, the break, as far as the breakdown and remediation.
Yeah.
I have not had an actual deal from them.
Okay. But this $40,000 is a figure that Brett came up with, that he suggested, why don't I send you $40,000 so that you can go ahead and at least make a partial payment to Interstate? I guess while we're waiting for Interstate to give us the final bill.
Great. Interstate, you know, with your contract, they say they want to pay the contractor at the end, so they deserve to drag, say a word, or give the stuff to us in nine seconds one for you.
All right. Okay, we were, we have received, and it's in the bank, $40,000. Let's take that money and go ahead and make a payment to Restoration, and hopefully they'll be incented, incented to get their bill finished so they can present it to TAC, so the TAC can pay them the balance of what we owe them.
Make a motion, we pay it.
Motion to approve this $40,000 payment made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six is an item that we've, we deal with from time to time. Tim Taylor, who is responsible for collection of delinquent taxes, has a situation here similar to many that we've dealt with in the past. He has received a bid for a one acre lot with a house, not much of a house, but with a house, it's at 2793 County Road 1220. This had previously been struck off at a delinquent tax auction. So this is, this is one of those that's a large amount that we're not used to. We're used to getting, you know, a thousand, two, three, four thousand dollars for these struck off pieces of property. But we have a situation here where the high bidder was also the successful bidder on, I think about an eight acre tract that was behind this one acre in question, and he needs this one acre in question to give him access to the eight acres that was previously landlocked. So he had a heavy motivation in making sure he was the high bidder on this. But we have a bid from Angel Guzman in the amount of $43,000 for this one acre tract with house. And again, there's, nobody's living in this house, it's a pretty rough house. We did have two other bids in the amount of $42,600, and then we had an $8,000 bid on this property. So my recommendation is that we take the $43,000. This does not all go to the county. Whether we had gotten, I think Tim said, half this or $43,000, the amount coming to the county for delinquent taxes is substantially less than the amount that's being paid. to the county for delinquent taxes is substantially less than the amount that's being paid. So I believe that that additional money goes back to the, to the property owner. It's not just a windfall to the county. So I would ask for your approval here on this.
Make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, or any discussion or questions about this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number seven, I'm going to let Commissioner Fitch tell us about this. This is a repair job over in the Annex Building that has nothing to do with any of the work that's going on in David Colley's office, and I don't think it has anything to do with repairs to the bathroom. This is something else. So tell us what you found here and how you got to this agenda item.
We've got a wall right beside our vault in the break room at the Annex, and it's had significant water damage for years. And they were always, well, that was a leaking roof at one time, the roof's leaking, or years ago, the roof leaked. So it's been that way for several years. And the last few weeks ago, it, uh, these drain lines for some air conditioners that sit right above that vault backed up and pumped probably 15 gallons a day down that wall, and just completely soaked it, and it just disintegrated the sheet rock. So David figured it out.
Where did it get to this wall?
So it's right, uh, go down into the break room, down the ramp, come around, you know where the table always is, right in front of that, that big walk-in safe?
Yeah.
It's the wall right next to it. It's a little corner, cubby hole right there. It's a little eight-by-10 kind of offset corner.
Can you see this damage?
With like a seven-foot ceiling.
Do you see this damage from the?
Yes, when you come down in there and you look, you always see that old wall's nasty looking, kind of moldy, ugly. And it's got some holes in it from soft spots. And then the other day, you could just push your hand through it. And David figured out, these three lines right above that were going into one small three-quarter inch line. And they were just, that line couldn't take it. And it was, it'd been leaking so long that on the second floor, it rotted a piece of the floor out. So we got all that fixed, and it's working properly. It's time to tear that sheet rock out and replace it.
Whatever the issue did that fix, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I'm glad to get it fixed. It's been such a nasty-looking spot of the building. We always knew we had to fix it. It's just getting worse, and it finally got really bad. So what we want to do, while looking at that little cubby hole there, it's not good to set in, it's a seven-foot ceiling, we want to make a closet across there. Tear that sheet rock out, re-sheetrock it, and there's not any insulation in it. And then wall up a closet there, and we already have a door and a frame that came out of something that I think we got out of where we're putting David's office at over there. So it won't cost us a door, just some materials and about two days, three guys, construction to fix that closet and fix that unsightly matter. And it's dry now, it's going to be nice, and it'll be good storage in that break room. So the bid on it is $2,500, and I'd make a motion that we have that work done.
Okay, this is Big Dog Roofing Construction, who's currently working on the David Colley remodeling there. How is that project coming along? And I'll just say-
It's over this morning, probably got a week, next week, he should be able to start moving.
This has been a lengthy project, and-
Mm-hmm, slow.
Slow.
We waited on doors and possibly flooring. So they still need to paint a cabinet and put a countertop on a cabinet in there. The floors are pretty much in, they got to do some grouting, where they repaired some of the tile. But that vinyl plank wood flooring, it's good-looking flooring, and it's, I like it. It's really nice. So I talked to David Colley this morning, he said, he thinks, and I talked to Big Dog Construction last week, he said, another week, which will be this week, they should be finishing up, and he wants to clean everything up and clean it. So David said, next week's not a good moving week for him. He has somebody that's going to be off. So he wants both his ladies there when they move, and I told him we'd get together and get some trustees, and we'd get it all orchestrated, get them moved right across down the hall. And so hopefully, a week will be done. That's what we're-
Is Mr. McDermott willing to wait till the completion of this $2,500 job to get paid?
Not sure.
As opposed to paying him upfront?
I think so, kind of, not sure.
I think that that's appropriate within him.
I would think so. He still has a bathroom project we got to start on and get finished.
I would think within a contract-
And we'll be paying for this other.
We would want to finish this one before we make the final-
This is just a two-day, maybe three pieces of sheet rock, and all the framing and painting, so I'm sure he'll wait.
Well, I want you to add to that motion that with payment at completion.
Okay, I should make a motion, we'll do the $2,500 bid and pay on completion.
All right, got a motion. Second, Commissioner Parker, any discussion on that? All right, Commissioner Fitch, thank you for researching that, and thank you to David. Please express our appreciation for figuring this problem out after who knows how many years. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, welcome Gary Luba, H.W. Lochner, our 1735 College Road project. And like we did a couple of weeks ago, we need to take care of some intermediary, intermediary business related to this project and the purchase of right-of-way parcels.
Good morning. Since I was last here, we have like six more appraisals in, ready for the county's approval. And I'll just go through these kind of quickly. Let's see, we've got an appraisal for parcel one now. Land value is 2743. Well, the parcel area is .422 of an acre. Land value's 2743. The improvement value is $6,672, which includes barbed wire fencing, a pipe gate, and a metal rod gate. And there's some cost secure for that, for $416 for a total value of $9,831. The next is parcel two. That is .402 of an acre. Both of these, one and two, front State Highway 49, kind of, I guess it'd be to the west of that corner store at the intersection there. They're putting in a right-hand turn lane there to 1735. And this one is .402 of an acre. Land value's $3,015. Improvement value is $812, which is an asphalt, for asphalt paving, for a total amount of Next is parcel 20. That is .504 of an acre. Land value is $3,276. Improvement value, $6,058. And that includes barbed wire fencing and concrete pavement. Cost secure for, I believe, the fencing is an additional $162, $62 for a total value of $9,986. Next is parcel 23. This is one acre, .043. So the land value's $6,780. Improvement value, $4,215.
Hey Gary, what was the size on that parcel?
Yeah, one acre, .043. That sound-
.043 of an acre? Or 1.043?
1.043, I'm sorry.
Okay. You said 6,000, I was going to-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, 1.043. Got you.
Yeah. Okay, so it's, yeah, 4215 for improvement value, which includes barbed wire fence and metal gate, metal pipe gate. And so there's a cost secure for $466 for a total value of $11,461. Next is parcel 25, which that has, that's one of the displaced houses. And so that one is the whole thing, and if you know where that cell tower site is, and then there's the, I think it's brown paint house. So all of that, you know, it's a pretty lengthy parcel, is 1.391 acres. Okay, the total land value is $10,572. The improvement value is $214,910. And what, that includes a lot, you got like a single-family residence, A, and it'd be storage building, agricultural building, chain link fence, exterior light, gravel paving, let's see, asphalt paving, septic system, and landscaping. So all those improvements are, yeah, $214,910. And there are some, you know, damages, cost secure, in the amount of $34,493 for a total value of $259,975.
Gary, in the, in the ways that we work relocation costs, how much of that total tab there would be picked up by Tax dot? Any of it?
This is, this is completely for the real estate itself. The, you don't know what the relocation cost may be until you-
They're not included in that figure, in other words.
No, that's, that's extra, and so we'll, and that's one of those things that we'll have to wait because of the Tax dot budgeting problems right now until-
Right. What are some relocation costs? Describe what some of those might be. If it doesn't pay for another house, but it sounds like this house will be demolished eventually?
Yes, yes.
Okay, if-
It's right in, right in the acquisition.
Well, just so we all understand what relocation costs are, if we're going to have to pay $250,000, what is theoretically, what is Tax dot going to pay for in this case?
Well, they will cover, they will go, or we will, for them, go out on the market to see if this, right here, will by itself get them into another house. In this instance, it'll be really a rental supplement because they leased the house out to some renters. And so that works a little differently. What you do is you go find what is fair market rent for something similar on the market, and then you figure that's like 42 months of rent. So that could be, gosh, I've seen some similar, could be like maybe $30,000, $40,000, I'm just guessing, you know, from what I've seen.
And who gets that money? The tenant or the landlord?
Yes, the tenant. And what they can do with that money, they've got to use it to get, okay? But they can convert it to a down payment if they want to, and just, you know, if they want to become a house owner, instead of just renting somewhere. So they've got that option, and then they'll get moving costs. And the moving costs will be like, it can be a self-move, and they base it on a room count, or they can have a commercial mover come and, you know, pack their stuff up and load it up and deliver, you know? So they can do either way. And so that's, that's a rental, but if there's, on the other end, like parcel 24, then they're actually an owner occupant. So what we'll do is go out on the market and see, this may be sufficient, what we pay for the real estate. But if it's not, and there's a gap out there, say, you can't put them into the same type of house, say it may be like a delta of $20,000 or something like that, then they will get that supplement, but they have to use it to get. It's just not, it's extra money for them to do with whatever they want. And if they don't use it, then they, they can't claim anything. But it would, yeah, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So all the money here is going to the owner of the house?
Yes.
Which is different from the landlord, I mean, the tenant.
Right, it owns those improvements.
But the tenant's going to get something out of this for the trouble of having to move to a different location.
Yes, right, right.
All right. That's all I have.
Okay, and that's the last one that I have with me today. And to kind of let you know, I mean, there's, there's like six more appraisals that are still outstanding, that the appraiser's working on. And I was going to kind of discuss those survey issues, and that's with parcel 10 and 12. And it's just kind of a mess because of the way the prior vesting deeds, it's kind of like it's gone kind of back and forth between family members, and it's just kind of, sort of messed up with the boundaries. So Tax dot, their surveyor, he's having, it was Sam Inc., is who they were using as a surveyor, so they're going to have to just get together with the landowner surveyor to see if they can work out these issues. It could be another, you know, month or two, maybe, before they have it worked out, and to get a re-survey done of those parcels. So that will put the appraiser on hold until we get the final product. And then, I know she's working on the convenience store, and then there's a property right next to, abutting to the, to the west. And so it doesn't have like legal access right now, but people get in on that drive to the convenience store, and then they peel off to go to that, you know, fireworks stand that's there. And so we're trying to see if we can figure something out, so maybe the damages are not very high because of that. I mean, they don't have legal access today, but we're trying to see what Tax dot may be able to do for them to put a wider drive on, like parcel four, that will straddle the property line, and they can still get in, you know, from State Highway 49. So we're kind of waiting to see what Tax dot tells us about that. There may need to be some kind of joint. I mean, it's variable now, but maybe have some kind of written joint, you know, drive access agreement between the owners. So we're, we're looking into that. But this is winding down, and we've got about half of our title commitments, and I expect more this week. So I'll be able to make, it looks like about four or five offers I can make this week. So it is moving, so. Any questions?
Okay, so I'll have some appraisals to sign-
Yes, sir.
-with you. What else needs, needs me to sign, anything? You've given us status on the title commitments, you've explained the parcel 10 and 12 difficulties there, which we talked about.
Yeah, yeah, I think I see it.
Okay. Well, I would, I guess, ask you, as we've done before, to authorize me to sign these appraisals today.
Make a motion to authorize the judge to sign appraisals?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Item number nine, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion to approve the reports.
Is that a second? Second, Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 10, consider possibly approved treasurer's report.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For your signature. Item number 11, we have three budget amendments. I'll wait till you're finished signing those. The first one, number 29, relates to Gary's presentation at our last meeting. This was approved in court on May 10th. It's a supplemental work authorization that came from Lochner to remove the fees for relocations, to correct appraisal fees, and to add the three parcels that were not part of the initial work authorization. If you'll recall, there was some, I guess, some land sales that occurred, or some divisions that occurred in there, which created- that occurred in there, which created the need to add to the total parcel count by three. The funds in the 2004 right-of-way fund are designated to be used to fund the portion of the cost of this project paid by Titus County, and so, that's what we're doing. We're taking $38,800, putting it into that professional services, right-of-way acquisitions and appraisals, increasing the budget amount of $477,000 up to $516,200. That's first budget amendment. Second one, number thirty, relates to precinct four. Road and bridge funds are classified as special revenue because these funds are designated for road improvements in, within each precinct. The external audit each year provides that the amount of available fund balance that was not spent in the previous year, which can then be expended during the current or subsequent year, and in this case, that is $15,000, so we're adding to Jimmy's repairs budget by $15,000, which was carry, I'll call it carryover money from the previous year that was unspent. The last is a decrease to hygiene supplies with an offsetting increase to other expenses in the commissary fund managed by Sheriff Ingram. So, we're adding, uh, $5,000 to his other expense line related to the commissary, and we're removing $5,000 out of his hygiene budget, so, I don't wanna ask about that question, but we're, we're not gonna be quite as clean, maybe, I don't know. Reducing hygiene supplies, maybe we had an overabundance of that from the previous year, and adding to other expense, $5,000 just to switch between line items within his budget, no new money. That's all we have there.
Make a motion to approve-
Motion to approve the budget amendments is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number twelve, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion with payer bills.
Motion to pay this, uh, two weeks' bills is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And approved by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing comments, um, we're gonna change up our budget meetings this year. This is the time we get together with the department heads, which is typically done in mid-July. We're gonna back it up for a week, I mean, for a month, by about a month, and this will enable Barber to get work done quicker, get us final budget numbers quicker, and could we maybe even possibly approve our budget sooner than the last week before the year changes, or not necessarily? That would be a plus to come out of this. So, spread the word, we're going to target the week of June the fourteenth, June fourteenth, and I'm thinking we'll probably do it, our typical Thursday, Friday meetings, so fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, so maybe the seventeenth, eighteenth of June. I guess we ought to all look at our calendars here for a second and make sure we're all Anybody have a problem with that Thursday and Friday, June seventeenth and eighteenth?
Nope.
So, I'm thinking about each of those two mornings, half-days on Thursday, Friday, seventeenth and eighteenth, and we'll put out a notice and send it, as we always do, to our department heads to, uh, get your budget requests in a little earlier this year to give us a little more breathing room in that process. I've told you about Dana, um, still easy to get a COVID vaccine at multiple locations here in town. The hospital will be beginning a market, marketing campaign to get the word out, to encourage people that have not gotten their vaccine to please reconsider and get that done as easy as it is. We stand at just over 35% of our population has been vaccinated. I sure would like to see that higher and avoid any resurgence this fall when the weather gets cooler. It's still the, the recommendation, I realize there's many people that are in the wait-and-see and not making a commitment on that yet. That's all I have. Commissioner Parchman, do you have any closing comments?
No.
Commissioner Fitch?
I just wanna say, attaboy to David Holmes. He, uh, we had a couple of service calls over at the Annex building in the last two weeks, and one of them was this leak air conditioner that he got fixed, the other one was another stopped-up air conditioner, uh, drain that was in a floor, and, uh, we put our heads together, and he's very impressive on knowledge of that building, who to call, what's been done, where stuff is, man, I was impressed.
Tell them-
And he does a lot of jobs.
Tell them how clean the roofs are.
Uh, let me tell you about the roof over there. We got on the roof, I've been dreading it, me and Jeff talked about it, and since we got these reports back that these drains were not drainage-sufficient, David had cleaned, had been cleaning those roofs off, they are spotless, they look new, the drains are really clean, and we trimmed, uh, just a few limbs that were hanging over the roof in the back, and got rid of those, and we had to remove an air conditioner that had been changed out, and apparently what happened was those parking lots were full, so we got up there real early one morning, threw the air conditioner off the roof when nobody was around, so it's pretty exciting. The Annex building, across the street, so that's about a third of a, two-thirds of a city block, several buildings put together, those roofs look nice, and he keeps them spotless, which is important, and, uh, the drains are working good, and I'm just impressed with the guy. He is a go-getter. Just gonna give him an attaboy.
Very good. Thank you.
David Holmes, our head custodian maintenance-
Head custodian. He, he does a lot, lot of work that none of us-
He does it voluntarily. He's got on that roof many a day, and he'll tend to things. He knows when air conditioners are out, when service people are there, he's there beside them, he knows what's been done and what's, needs to be done.
Judge, may I?
Hmm, go ahead.
You may.
Uh, even Alvin, Alvin Fizzle, the sheriff, said that old building needs to be, you break, think of breaking right on a long-term land about something new over there. What's your, and I think, was it, is the roof leaking?
We thought there were several roof leaks, but apparently it hadn't been leaking, it was these other air conditioner issues, uh, and when I got on the roof, that was one of my concerns, I was really dreading looking at that roof. The roof is in good shape.
No, your question was, why did we not remodel it?
Yeah, remodeling the building.
No, no, no.
That's another question you had about what we think. What I think about the building, it's, uh, it's got good bones, it can be repaired, it can be remodeled, it, uh, it is the newest building on the whole square down here, to me, uh, the way it's built, um, some upgrades would be nice.
Judge later in the report, it said, boy, probably cost more to fix this building than it was for that several months ago.
Lot, well, part of the problem was, if we did that significant of a remodel, you would kick in certain, uh, requirements by codes, meaning gotta sprinkle the entire building, fix some ADA issues, deal with some security issues, uh, so, before you spend a dime fixing the building, factor in what could be several hundred thousand dollars worth of that kinda stuff, if we did a significant remodel, so. But you know, we kinda, I don't know if you were at this meeting or not, but the court decided that they wanted to hold off and postpone any plans for a major demolition of those buildings, just try to, try to buy a few more years. That was a four-to-one, anyway.
Some minor repairs, keep up, upgrading, and stay on top of things helps a lot, and David keeps on top of things. He, he does some really good, he has some great ideas. He fixes a lot of stuff on his own, so.
One more, what are your thoughts?
Yeah.
What about your neighbor, he's got a French drain issue with his neighboring building?
We, we responded to that, I have not heard back from her. Any final comments?
I'd just like to say that, that, uh, I'd like to wish Dana a speedy recovery. Uh, I know he's hurting today, so, I just like to wish him a speedy recovery.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for your patience today. I think we got a lot done, major accomplishment on the, and, I mean, on the Justice Center, we, we hope. It's been three months since that flood, hasn't it? Well, Steve's already gone, three months, and we're, we haven't done much over there yet. Hopefully, we can get going quickly. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if you are ready.
I'll make it move.
Motion, Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.